We want to welcome you to our midweek Bible study on the book of James. Uh, we will be getting the second chapter here today. This is our fourth session on the book of James, and we will be looking at the first thirteen verses. And as I told you in the past, uh, James is a very practical book. Uh, it reminds us of how we are to live our life as believers in Jesus Christ. Uh, and in fact, in the first verse of chapter two, uh, he says that, speaking to his brothers, or our brothers, uh, his sisters in Christ. And he also uses that same term, uh, in verse five, when he says, "My dear brothers." Uh, but, uh, he reminds us at the beginning of this chapter, "As believers in our glorious Lord Jesus Christ, don't show favoritism." And that is the thesis, the theme, uh, of the entire thirteen verses that he has to share with us, uh, here today. What he reminded us, uh, is that the way we behave toward people indicates what we really believe about God. Now, think about that for a moment. The way we behave toward people indicates what we really believe about God. You see, you can't separate, uh, the human relationship from divine fellowship. Uh, 1 John 4:20 says, "If anyone says, 'I love God,'" and yet hates his brother, he is a liar. Uh, "For anyone who does not love his brother, whom he has seen, cannot love God, whom he has not seen." And so, John there, the apostle, uh, was reminding us there's a relationship, uh, between how we treat others and what we really believe and how we really, uh, feel toward our God. Uh, it also speaks of our spiritual immaturity, uh, whether when we, uh, are loving all and not showing favoritism. Uh, spiritual immaturity, uh, where you talk about the beliefs, uh, but you don't really practice it. Uh, spiritually mature people are those who not only talk about their faith, they not only share the gospel, but they live the gospel. Uh, they live by faith. And this is what James wants to remind us about today, about living in a way where Christ is exemplified through our lives to everybody. Not just those that, uh, you are close to, not just your family, not just those of the same socio-economic status, uh, that you have, not just those from your region of the country or of the state, not just those who have the same skin color, uh, that you have. Uh, but we are to love everybody and not show favoritism. And I'm going to show you from this passage, and not only this, but from passages throughout the Scripture, uh, how that, uh, the Scripture continually reminds us, uh, that we are not to show favoritism. We're to love one another equally, in that we love each other completely. We're givers in life, uh, we're not takers. Uh, and so, here's what he has to say, uh, to us, uh, in these thirteen verses. Uh, let me remind you, first of all, the first four verses. He talks about the fairness of God, uh, how God looks upon our life, and how God is always just, God is always fair, God never shows favoritism. Uh, let me show you that in these verses. He says, "My brothers, as believers in our glorious Lord Jesus Christ, don't show favoritism. Suppose a man comes into your meeting wearing a gold ring and fine clothes, and a poor man in shabby clothes also comes in. If he shows special attention to the man wearing the fine clothes and say, 'Here's a good seat for you,' but say to the poor man, 'You stand there or stand on the floor by my feet, have you not discriminated among yourselves and become judges with evil thoughts?'" Now, it's easy for people in our day and time to look upon others out in the world and say, "They're not our kind of people." Well, let me tell you something. In God's eyes, we're all the same. There are no big eyes and little u's at the foot of the cross. We're all desperate sinners, uh, at the foot of the cross, in need of a Savior, in need of His love, His grace, and His mercy. Uh, there are no big eyes and little u's in the church. Uh, we're all equal in the eyes of God. God is no respecter of persons. Uh, this is especially true when you look in the Scriptures and you see, uh, Jesus in the example that is set. Look in Matthew 22 chapter and the sixteen verse, and you'll see where, uh, some of the scribes, the Pharisees, had gathered together. Uh, they wanted to trap Jesus literally, uh, in concerning the giving of money. Uh, should we render unto, uh, give money unto Caesar, render unto Caesar, or should we render unto God? Uh, and you'll notice that when they come to Jesus to ask him that, uh, that what they, they say, "Lord, master, we know that you are a man of integrity. We know that you do not look, uh, at man to see where every his status is, or where his race is, or where his religious beliefs are, that that you treat every person the same. Uh, even the enemies of Christ recognize in Jesus that he showed no favoritism. Jesus looked at the heart, not at the outward appearance." You see, uh, another picture of that, uh, in the book of Acts in chapter nine, in verse twenty-six to twenty-eight, uh, right after Paul had been converted. You know, this experience with Robespierre in Damascus. Uh, when he came back to Jerusalem, he wanted to join in with the other believers, uh, in Christ, the new Christians, the other Christians that were there. But they were afraid. They didn't really believe that he had truly had that miraculous, that complete change in his life, and had gone from being a persecutor and a murderer of Christians to becoming a believer in Christ. They couldn't grasp that. Uh, but you, uh, will look there in Acts nine chapter, and you'll see that Barnabas came to the side of Paul. And Barnabas related to them about Paul's conversion experience, uh, and how God had worked in his life in Damascus, and how that, that Paul had shared Christ and was standing strong in his faith. And because of that, uh, the church there in Jerusalem, the people in Jerusalem, uh, they accepted Paul as well because of the word of Barnabas. Now, what does that say to us? We are not the ones to stand in judge, in judgment, of the decisions that people make for Christ. If a child comes in simple faith, and they're trusting Jesus in their simple faith, who are we to judge and say, "Well, that child is too young," or, "Or that child, uh, is not ready"? If a person who has lived a rough life, uh, maybe even antagonistic toward God, and of course, all of us without Christ are in rebellion against God, uh, but maybe antagonistic toward Christians. If they come and they have experienced a change in their life, who are we to judge and whether we accept them or not? Now, by their fruits, you will know then, but it takes time to see the fruits. And so, initially, we have got to look upon the heart of man and believe in the power of Christ the same over what outward circumstances of the past may bring in an individual. You know, Jesus himself, uh, was despised and rejected, Isaiah fifty-three, verses one through three tells us. And yet, he is the very glory of God. I like what John, the Gospel John, uh, chapter one, uh, says concerning this. Uh, chapter one, verse fourteen. It says, "The word became flesh and made his dwelling among us. We have seen his glory, the glory of the one and only, who came from the Father, full of grace and truth." The world despises Jesus, rejecting Jesus. The world's system of government, the world's religious government of his day. And yet, he is the very glory of God. John seven twenty-four says, "Stop judging by mere appearances and make a right judgment." Did you notice that as James is saying this in a very practical way? Uh, he reminds us that we're not to be discriminators. Uh, we are to, uh, not to become judges with evil thoughts, but we are to be loving, compassionate, giving people, looking for the best in others, not for the worst. We are living for others as we live for Jesus Christ. And how we practice our faith, how we behave toward the people around us really indicates what we really believe and where our faith really is concerning God. So, he talks about the fairness of God. God does not show favoritism. And then, uh, he reminds us in verses five through seven, uh, of the favor of God, the fairness of God, and now the favor of God. And we read verses five through seven to you. Listen, my dear brothers, and notice the difference between that and verse one. Verse one, "My brothers; hear, my dear brothers; hear, my dearly beloved brothers." He said to them, "Listen, I love you, but you are doing something that you ought not to be doing." Here's what he says. "Has not God chosen those who are poor in the eyes of the world to be rich in faith and to inherit the kingdom? He promised those who loved him, but you have insulted the poor. Is it not the rich who are exploiting you? Are they not the ones who are dragging you into court? Are they not the ones who are smandering the noble name of him to whom you belong?" Now, you'll notice in his earlier verses, he points out, listen, there's some of you that are showing favoritism to a person because of their material wealth, uh, because of their social status, uh, because of their education, uh, because of their business. They have a gold ring, they wear fine clothing. He said, "On the other hand, there are those in this congregation who are poor, uh, they have the shabby clothes, uh, they, uh, are not materially wealthy." And he indicates to these people, "Some of you are showing favoritism to the rich person over the poor people." Some of you are saying to the rich person, "Here, you have a special place. Here, you are welcome." While they're saying to the poor person, "You sit, uh, over there or stand over there. Uh, you do not have real importance. We will tolerate you, but we won't really accept you." Have you noticed that in some Baptist churches, I'm sure Greer would never be one of those, but in some Baptist churches, there seem to be those cliques, people who, who kind of associate together, that they have their own little group, and they don't want anybody else in there really. They're real slow to accept outsiders. That's exactly what he's talking about here. Uh, and it reminds us, uh, that, uh, God's choosing, God bringing people to salvation, uh, involves God's grace and God's favor. God has loved each of us. It's not His will that any should perish, but then all will come to repentance. Let me remind you again, uh, that God loves all of us unconditionally. He loves all of us equally. And that's hard sometimes for you to fathom, but it's true. Uh, there, God loves you just as much as He loves any person out there in the world. He loves us all the same, and He loves us all completely. His love is an eternal love. There's nothing that can separate us from His love. God favors His children. He favors all of us equally. That's hard for me to fathom, but it is true. Uh, God does not look upon the, uh, national or the social differences, uh, that may be in our lives. Uh, in fact, Acts ten thirty-four tells us that God does not show favoritism. And Ephesians six, in verse nine, let me read that to you. Uh, it speaks of, uh, about the social status. He said, "Masters treat their slaves in the same way. Do not threaten them, since he knows that he, he who is both their master and yours is in heaven, and there is no favoritism with him." In James, uh, chapter one, in verse nine through eleven, we looked at a couple of weeks ago. Uh, he talks again about the person then, humble circumstances, takes pride in the position he has as a child of God. Uh, the rich should take pride in their low position, in their humility at the foot of the cross, because we are all equal in the eyes of God. Uh, God's favor, God's grace forces us to relate to people on the basis of God's plan and not on the basis of human merit or social status. Jesus broke down the wall between us and God at the cross. How do I know that? The Bible tells us that when Jesus gave up the gospel, when he gave up his spirit, when he said, "Father, to thy hands I command my spirit," when he said it, "It is finished," and he died. The Bible says, "An earthquake, great earthquake, came upon the earth. Uh, the graves were open." But the real telltale sign was that the curtain, the veil of the temple, that separated the main part of the temple, the people, uh, part of the temple, from the holy of holies. It was torn in two from top to bottom, symbolizing that through the cross of Jesus Christ, we are no longer separated from God. God loves us, and God favors all of His people. So, you have the various of God, and then you have the favor of God. And then, verses eight through eleven, you see the faithfulness of God. And you read this to me. "If you really keep the royal law," found in Scripture, and you know that when he quotes the royal law, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Remember, Jesus said, "There are two great commandments, to love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, with all your strength." And then, he said, "The second is like the two." Here it is, "To love your neighbor as yourself." James says, "If you're truly going to be obedient and keep that law, uh, then, uh, you, uh, have to, uh, look at that as your obligation, as God's command for you." So, he says, "If you really keep the royal law in Scripture, love your neighbor as yourself, you are doing right, if you really keep that." Notice that. But if you show favoritism, there's that word again, you sin and are convicted by the law as lawbreakers. For whoever keeps the whole law and yet stumbles at just one point is guilty of breaking all of it. For he who said, "Do not commit adultery," I also said, "Do not murder." And if you do not commit adultery, but if you do commit murder, you have become a lawbreaker. Notice the way that he is bringing out to us and to the people of his day. Now, remember, uh, James is writing primarily to the early Hebrew church, to the early Jewish believers who have accepted Christ. Uh, this is probably, uh, the first book we have written in the New Testament. Some scholars think it may be Galatians may have been first, but this is among the first. And it's at a time when, uh, the Jewish Christians are meeting, and they're beginning to, uh, try to decide how they are to live their life for Christ. And he reminds us, uh, of the faithfulness of God, and that we are to exemplify that faithfulness in Him by not showing favoritism, uh, in our Christian life. Obedience to the law of God will give us the picture, and really more than a picture, the truth, the evidence that we are faithful to God. If we're faithful and, uh, living under the authority of this Scripture, if we're faithful and, uh, living as God would have us to live through His word, uh, then that obedience shows that, uh, we, uh, are believers in Christ. You don't obey in order to obtain salvation, but you obey because you have been saved. Does that make sense? Where, where it was said, "Like grace through faith, not of works." But in verse ten says, "We are His workmanship," this is Ephesians, the second chapter. "We are His workmanship, created unto good works." In other words, if you truly experience a change in your heart, you truly experience salvation, then you are going to be obedient to God. You're going to be faithful to God, because God is always faithful to you. And this is what he is speaking of here. Now, some people say, "Well, listen, I, uh, I have never committed murder, I've never committed adultery, I've never done any of these great things. Maybe I set a white lie, or maybe I thought people's thoughts, or maybe, uh, I have, uh, done some other thing that I would not consider that serious. Maybe I have shown favoritism." What James is saying is, "If you break one law, you have broken the law, because all sin is rebelling against God, and God looks upon sin the same way. It's all rebelling against God. It's not, uh, so much the outward circumstances. It's all serious with God, because God looks upon the heart of man, not primarily upon the actions of man, because God does not show favoritism. It applies in our, uh, action and in our sins as well. Our life and our ministry is our best testimony of our faithfulness to God. If we're going to go by the name of Christian, and this is what, uh, he is talking about, uh, here, uh, in verse seven, and he says, uh, that some of these who show favoritism are slandering the noble name of him that whom you belong. Know what he's saying. You are, uh, slandering the name of Jesus. You belong to Jesus. You are not your own, you're bought with the price through the blood of Jesus. And, uh, we need to be careful that in our daily walk with Christ, that every aspect of our life brings honor and glory to Jesus, that we don't bring reproach to the name of Jesus, uh, that we don't slander the name of Jesus. What about our lives? Can people in the world around us see the change that's taking place within our hearts? If we truly experience Jesus Christ, if He has truly created us as a new creation in Him, we truly experience the new birth? Do the people see a change in us? Do they see that we're not the person we used to be? And if they see no difference, James says, "We're bringing slander, we're bringing reproach to the name of Jesus, because He is the one who has changed us." So, in this passage of Scripture, we see the fairness of God, we see the favor of God, we see the faithfulness of God. And then, finally, uh, in verses twelve and thirteen, we see the freedom, the liberty of God. Notice what he has to say here. "Speak and act as those who are going to be judged by the law that gives freedom, because judgment without mercy will be shown to anyone who has not been merciful. Mercy triumphs over judgment." Here's what he says. We need to live our lives with a conscious aspect that God is watching us, and God is judging our faith, and God is wanting to see how we're going to give testimony of what He has done in our life. And by that, we are going to give an account of ourselves for the life that we live. Matthew twelve thirty-six reminds us that our words will be judged. Uh, let me, uh, give that Scripture to you. Uh, in Matthew twelve, in verse thirty-six, uh, he says, "But I tell you that men will have to give an account on the day of judgment for every careless word they have spoken." We need to be careful what we say and how we say it. We need to be careful that the compassion and the love of Jesus flows through us as we speak to others. We need to be careful that His grace and His mercy is exemplified through our lives. We're going to give an account of what we say, of the words that we use, but also our deeds will be judged. Uh, notice in Colossians, the third chapter, uh, in verses twenty-two to twenty-five. Let me get this for you. Uh, he says, uh, "Whatever you do, work it with all your heart, as working for the Lord and not for men, since you know that you will receive an inheritance from the Lord as a reward. It is for the Lord Jesus Christ you are serving. Anyone who is wrong will be repaid for his wrong, and there is no favoritism." There's that word again. Listen, the Lord gives us the opportunity to live in liberty and in freedom. He has set us free in salvation. How we live our life, how we let Christ, uh, work through our life, through our words and through our deeds will determine whether we remain in that territory ourselves, or, listen to me, or whether we, by sin, enslave ourselves again. We're to come out from the world and be separate, says the Lord. There's to be a change in our life. We have been set free in Christ. We're not to go back to the ways of the world and enslave ourselves again when Christ has brought us out through the cross. Uh, you'll notice also, uh, when he's speaking here in verse thirteen, he speaks about our very attitude. We're going to give an account of the attitude that we exhibited on this life, because judgment without mercy will be shown to anyone who has not been merciful. So, he's reminding us, listen, you're going to give an account for the life that you live. And if you live a life of sharing mercy with others, of sharing grace with others, sharing love with others, being kind- sharing love with others, being kind to others, letting compassion of Jesus live through you, God's going to reward you. But if you have that old stuck-up attitude, that, uh, halcy, proud attitude, where you think you're better than somebody else, God's going to judge you. If you want God's mercy in your life, verse thirteen says, "You better be merciful yourself." When we obey God's law, it frees us from the sin and enables us to walk in liberty. Psalms one nineteen, verse forty-five. Every verse in the, in Psalm one hundred and nineteen, uh, use a different word, but every verse speaks about the word of God. Uh, and, uh, here he uses the word "process," he's talking about God's word. And he says this, "I will walk about in freedom, for I have sought out your process. I will walk about in freedom, because I have sought out your word. I have looked at your word. I have determined what you want to reveal to me, and now I am to live my life through your work." You want real freedom? Live under the authority and in the word of God. Your obedience to God brings freedom. Sounds like a oxymoron, sounds like a contradiction, but it is true, and it is right. Real freedom comes in our obedience to God. Why? Because obedience develops a self-discipline that prepares us for liberty. And liberty is not a license to do as we please. Liberty means the freedom to be all that I can be in Christ Jesus. Be all you can be in Christ Jesus. Live under the authority of God's word. Practice your faith. Live as Christ would have you live. And you can only do that, listen to me, you can only do that when you die yourself and allow Jesus to live His life through you. God bless you, and I hope that you do that this week. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the teaching of your word. More than I'm grateful to you for the preciousness and the truth of your word. I thank you, Lord, that it is God believed upon us, that it's true, and that every word is true. Lord, help us not only to accept that, help us not only to hear the word, but to be doers of the word. Help us to live out our faith in obedience to the word of God. Help us to live under the authority of your word. We know, Lord, that you love us, you love all of us the same. Help us, Lord, to look upon people as you see people. And help us to live compassionately, with mercy, and with grace. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being a testimony for you. And we ask your blessing and for you to be glorified through our lives, in Jesus' name. Amen.